All right, I'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Judy, you can go ahead and take the roll.
Table over, all fixed up.
Number two, approval of consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at board meetings will be approved by one vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on or any of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. B, general fund encumbrances, purchase orders and balances.
One of the things I do want to say is, the staff really appreciated the Christmas stipend. It's really nice that we were able to do that. We will hopefully continue to do that, you know, as long as we can unless we get to the point where, you know, finances of estate, finances of rush production make it to where we weren't able to. But I think it's such a nice thing that the board approves every year. We appreciate it so much. Mm-hmm.
Are they done? Are they, you know?
I think that the stuff is here. I'm not sure that it's all put up yet.
Did they set them up?
I'm not sure on that. I don't, I don't think that it's all quite up yet. But I could be wrong, though. It's been a week since I've asked.
You're right.
They're not quite up yet, no.
I almost think that we have to put them up.
Yeah, I figured it. Did you know?
All the stuff's there, though.
C, general fund warrants.
Hi. Did the girl win?
They did.
Good.
Thirty-five to sixteen.
Woo-hoo.
D, child nutrition fund encumbrances, purchase orders and balances. Just kind of looking through these as we go.
We're sitting right now with about a fund balance after we claimed today of about fifty thousand dollars in child nutrition. And that's one of the items we'll talk about on down later a little bit. We're really not spending, we're spending about ten thousand dollars in bills a month out of it, bringing in about seventeen, so.
Building fund encumbrances, purchase orders and balances.
There's really not much to that because we're not spending much out of it if we don't have to because we're going to make payments on that.
G, the building fund warrants. J, activity fund report. And K, treasures report.
And I will tell you that Amanda has gone back in and the sheet that Cory's looking at has been fixed since July because the numbers that we were working with were just what we could get to without the gear being closed out.
Right.
So now we've come, come back in, fine, can get and fix it to where it's absolutely correct. This is a pretty expensive month for us. When we talked about how everybody appreciated the Christmas stipends, really did, and we'll do that as long as we can. Then we had thirty thousand dollar payment to the county for, we have to pay them that for them to give us our big check inspection. And then we paid Alpha Plus about thirty thousand and paid Renaissance fifteen. We just had some of the bigger payments this month, so.
Does anybody have any questions through A through K? Don't let me rush you out, just think your time. Judy, do you have anything? I didn't know.
I wasn't sure if you needed to say anything.
No, I'm not, I just was curious if anything stuck out.
No, I don't think so, that is what she said, the random big payments we had this month. The activity fund, there's been a lot of money coming in and out of that place. And this tournament, the gym was more packed than I have seen it for many years.
Did it get pretty hot?
I don't think it got pretty hot, it just laughed a bit.
When you guys are ready, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, A through K. Again, don't let me rush you.
I'll second.
I made the motion. Jeff, second.
Little Phil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Yes.
Number three, discussion and vote to approve the 2016-17 school year.
School calendar.
Our school calendar.
If you don't mind, if you would table this one for me, after we've had our budget crunch and crisis, I would like a little more time to look at it. I would like to be maybe a little more strategic with some of our days off and see what we can do because the changes that we make now will affect us three years down the road. So if we can start preparing for, you know, lost revenue now, and, and that could be one of the solutions, you know. I don't see us going to four-day weeks. I don't think it's, I think that four-day weeks are very situational. Every district needs to decide that for themselves. And our, our school is so focused in Cherokee. We don't have a lot of outside where people travel and go and the days are not out. Our kids are here and we don't have a lot of absenteeism because that's what our kids do, they come to school, which is wonderful. So I don't necessarily know that four-day weeks are our answer, but I do think that maybe some four-day weeks will be, be looked at.
Once we table that, or when you think we'll read address it next month?
Next month. Yeah. Let me get that next month.
I was hoping they could go longer.
You kids, Saturday.
Daycare. Number three, okay then. Number four, discussion and vote to increase district substitute pay to eighty dollars for a full day and forty dollars for a half day.
What I did, we, we have a large problem with getting quality substitutes. We have some people up here do a fantastic job, but it doesn't really average out hourly to be something that somebody would want to come and do. So I called, I called ALDA and they do eighty-four for certified and sixty for non, and it works out to them for like nine dollars an hour for non and twelve dollars for certified. And I called Burlington and they do an eighty-forty, just an eighty dollars for everybody for a full day and a forty for a half. And that's kind of what I'm going to recommend that we do to get, and then we will get the word out. But I also want to do like a training, you know, people that come in that need to know what the, the rules are and where the cafeteria is and, you know, kids, if you let the kids down the rules, then sometimes you don't get the results that you really want. So I really kind of would like, maybe this summer, do a, a nice seminar for a day, bring people in and, and go over the policies and what we pay and, and start to get, really build up a good substitute list, so.
What was our numbers at before?
What were we paying, Judy?
Eight-twenty an hour for non-certified and eight-ninety-five an hour for certified. That's like sixty-two dollars a day for certified and fifty-six dollars a day for non.
Not going to do it, folks. Some people are good, just, you know, they're not here for the money and they, they enjoy the kids. And I met one of our substitutes who drives in from El Reno and substitutes for our old music teacher. And she was really nice, I was like, I ain't knowing. And she said, I just love the school and I love being here. And I'm like, thank you, so.
We have lost a couple of visa subs on our list just because it's too far for them to drive for the money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, come on, the fuel prices have gone down.
Fifty cent gas, what's the problem?
Right. So my recommendation is going to be that we go with eighty for a full and, and forty for a half. And, and that's just, if you're here in the morning and you leave at noon, forty, and if you're here all day, it's eighty, so that it's just kind of.
I'll make a motion to accept the superintendent's.
Jeff made a motion. TJ, second. Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Yes.
Number five, discussion and vote to provide breakfast at no cost district-wide for the remainder of the 15-16 school year.
And we've kind of batted this around all year and what we did is we stopped taking anything out of child nutrition. There's, there's no salaries coming out of it. We are taking the bills out of it, which is about ten thousand dollars a month, bringing in about seventeen thousand dollars a month. We're sitting at about fifty thousand dollars right now that's in that account. That's not really an account that I ever want to be a revenue account because you're supposed to put that back to the kids. And so what I would like for us to do, because we can do breakfast and not harm ourselves financially, I will really think strongly about lunch next year because I don't know that we can maybe pull that off. I'll look at the community grants that there are and see what kind of help that is to make that determination. But if we can at least get these kids in here with a breakfast and a full stomach to start the day on, I think we are going to fight, that's half the battle. And a lot of them come and have eaten, but also, you know, it's, it is another benefit for our staff members when teacher shortages are here and it's harder to find good staff, you know, we can say, these are the things that we do above and beyond for you. And your children, if you happen to have three kids in school or five kids in school, you know, you're going to get free breakfast and that adds up to a lot of money, so.
Is, are we going to change the, the times?
Not, not for the rest of this year. Yeah. We're, we're, Ruth and I discussed that this morning. We'll have a administrative planning day in March where I'll just take the administrators and the directors of food service and all that. We'll collect ourselves up and we're going to go see if we can use AEC's board meeting room or a board room where we're not actually here on campus, we'll still be in town, but when we're in camp, if we're on campus, we can't do anything, we can't get anything done. And so we're going to do a nice planning day on next year. And so by the time we end school this year, everybody will know if they've been, the assignments and they'll know what the schedules are. Hopefully Jeremy and I talked about it too, maybe he can do some free enrollment that we haven't been able to do before just because of organizational things, so that's what we're going to do in March.
Are we changing the menu or is it just going to be kind of the same?
Not right now. And one of the other things that we looked at when we looked to go into the food service provider, I still love them, I do, but if the, and I don't know that the cost is going to increase, but one of the things that I would like for, I really want Connie to look at is what are, what restrictions are we going to have placed on us? Right now, we're offering a really nice salad bar. As many times as you want to go to the salad bar, some kids just live on it and, and some kids will never eat a piece of lettuce in their life, you know? That's the way that it is. But I don't want us.
And the branch on it.
Exactly. I don't want us to get our hands tied with what we can and can't do serving food. So we're going to, we're going to take the rest of this year, look at it, really talk about it heavily over the summer and then, and we have all the paperwork just about done to do it if we want to. But I want to make sure we're not going to tie our hands with that, but.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
TJ's made the motion. Amber, second. Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Yes.
Number six, discussion and vote to approve additional camera systems to the elementary fieldhouse and the sports complex.
Okay, we, Jeremy and I talked about it and he got D A L security systems to come out and give us some quotes. And what we're talking about is we don't have cameras at the elementary. We're going to put place, let's see if this is my elementary system quote, six cameras. Let's see. Elementary school, ten high-definition cameras outside and six outdoor cameras outside. So we're going to place one in all the doors and strategic locations in the inside so that we can make sure that we've got.
What's the outside for us?
The first, ten were inside, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Six are outside.
Okay.
So there's sixteen that are going to go in there. And that quote was nine thousand dollars to get that done.
And you'll still be able to monitor everything from?
She'll have a system just like we have here, records everything, can look and see what's going on. You know, we've kind of expanded out with our, our parking lot is now over that east side, kind of gets it out of the way where somebody couldn't mess with stuff if they wanted to, making sure we get the playground covered because we want to make sure if something happens with a kid, we can go back and look what's going on.
Say your numbers again, I didn't get it right.
What, what, which numbers?
Well, I said six at the elementary.
No, ten out, inside cameras at the elementary and six outside cameras at the elementary for nine thousand dollars. It was basically nine thousand eighty-one dollars.
Thank you.
You betcha. Okay, so that was, that was for the elementary. And then we have on the, on the weight, well, room that we have right now, we don't have any cameras over there. And so that will be six outdoor cameras to just basically give us an outside view of what's going on in those parking lots, what's going on, and, and then that quote was three thousand eight hundred dollars.
And inside?
Uh-uh.
Good.
And inside.
I think it's a small step to help improve security and also it'll help us with liability issues and.
Right. And then the track and football field? We're going to have six high-definition outdoor color cameras. And that was a quote of thirty-eight hundred dollars.
And they're basically run day and night?
Yeah.
Okay, they've got night vision?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And, you know, we'll be able to monitor and record.
Will we need to put signs up to?
Yeah, definitely.
Let people know if this is under surveillance?
We'll be putting signs up, so we, we do have cameras and the rules of the facility and all those kind of things and, and make sure people know that you're being watched. You're being watched.
What was the price for them again, sorry?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. So those were the three. We brought them in.
Are we sufficient here at the high school with cameras? I mean, do we have any spots that we need to address?
Jeremy?
Oh, probably not right now, maybe at some point. These cameras are supposed to be better than the ones we have here. They're high-definition, so you'll be able to see them better.
A little clearer.
He said the ones that we have, the, the ones that'll be over there will be a lot better than what we have, maybe in a few years if we want to update them over here. He said the lighting, you know, depending on if there's lighting there in the dark, they'll only see, they won't see clear across the field if there's no lights at all. If it's pitch black, they'll only see to like the bottom of the flares to the track.
Don't put that in there.
Yeah. Tell them that lights up like the Fourth of July.
But he said if there's lights, you know, you can see them farther, but also if it lights in, you might be inviting people to come up at night, but.
Yeah. Okay.
So it gives us a little more security.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, one of the things that will, over the next year is, we, we need a better security plan. You know, I know that ALDA did their active shooter drill and those are the type of things that we need to do too and.
To help your insurance and stuff too?
Um, possibly, I don't know, I'd have to ask her. I have asked our insurance company to come and do a whole new scope because I'm sure that.
I'd love to see like access cards for all the teachers.
We can move towards, towards a lot more, yes, a lot more security. So those are the quotes. I am recommending that we go with this system. Jeremy did a really good job of the legwork on this and the guy came out really, really quickly and did a, a good job for us, so he's out of Enid. And I, I don't, I think it's money well spent. I know we're in money shortage times, but it, it's preventative for, for things that could happen.
Sure.
Motion to approve.
Amber's made the motion. TJ, second. Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm going to put this out here in case you guys just want to, I just don't want to run off all this paper five times.
Number seven, discussion and vote on joining schools in a lawsuit against the State Department of Education to correct erroneous disimbursements of state aid.
You know, I really struggled whether to put this as an item or not, but I thought, you know, it's really, it's really your decision to make, not mine. What's happened is over the last twenty-three years, the State Department of Education has, has calculated the formula wrong in the area of commercial and agricultural personal property. So what has happened is that some schools were overpaid and some schools were underpaid. Well, last year, we got a fifteen thousand dollar increase at midterm. Now, not all of that could be attributed to this particular thing, but some of it could be, but it's hard to determine which is which. Now, the, they, they're asking us if we would like to join this lawsuit because if they can get everybody and the attorney's fees are, you know, very reasonable. The bigger schools like Ponca City, they're, they're like, they're talking about millions of dollars. We're talking a very small amount of money for us. They want two hundred and fifty dollars for us to be a part of this lawsuit. But the problem that I see with it is, we didn't start coming into any kind of money until the last four years. It could very well be that those years before that, we were a school that was getting more money than we were supposed to and we can end up having to pay it back. Now, the thing that I say about that is, is that if this lawsuit goes through and we don't join it or we do join it, the outcome is going to be the same. We can spend two hundred and fifty dollars, put our name on a list that the State Department can see that we're on, and the result is going to be the same. We're either going to have to pay some money back if we are overpaid or we're going to get some money back if we, if we didn't, if, if we are owed money. If we're, if we give them our two hundred and fifty dollars or not, it doesn't matter. So when you, when you look at it, it's just a matter of.
Whether you want to be on the radar.
Whether you want to be on the radar. And, you know, I don't disagree with a school going after money that is, their money, I don't disagree with us doing it. But the amount of money that we're looking at as opposed to Ponca City, Durant, Midell, those schools is very minute.
Yeah.
They did do a scale like, I think, some, for the most, if you are like getting a hundred and, one point five million and above, you paid fifteen thousand dollars for your, your attorney fees. So obviously there are schools that are going to rake in some money. Now, the other side of that coin is, the state doesn't have this money to give them. So what, they are going to have to pull that money back from other schools. I, I'm going to be more madder than a hornet if the State Department's made a mistake for twenty-three years and said, oh, by the way, we made a mistake, give us our money back. You know, that's just, the times that we're in right now aren't going, any time, nobody's going to be happy, but right now, somebody's going to be fighting mad. So the amount of money that we're talking about for Cherokee is, is not like the larger schools. And you can have some discussion on it and see what you think. I just, honestly, I open my mouth and get myself on the State Department's radar enough. I'm not sure, I would like for Cherokee to be attached to that too.
I kind of feel like just we need to pick our battles and, you know, if you don't feel like it's something that's going to matter either way, that.
I don't.
That we just.
It, it.
Save it, save it, save the fight for when we really need it.
And there's the possibility that we get on this lawsuit and we, we go through with it and the Supreme Court won't hear it and says, no, we're not going to hear that. And so it's just been, you know, we, we got on the lawsuit, it was they won't hear it and, and it's kind of a done deal, so, you know, just, there's just so many variables that, really what I'm, what I'm going to suggest you do is I'm going to suggest you take no action. I, I don't think that you should be for it or against it. I think you should just take no action and we'll do nothing about it. We just kind of leave it like that. Unless you just wanted to vote it down, that's, that's completely up to you, but taking no action just kind of makes us Switzerland.
Yeah.
What do you think?
I think they should be accountable for what they did, but I don't think we join.
I, I do too. And they, and whether we join or not, they will be accountable.
Yeah.
If, if this, if the courts will hear it, they'll be accountable. And then that'll make us accountable either way. Either we get our money back or we won't.
What do you want to do, guys?
Take no action sounds good to me.
Yeah, that's, that's probably what I'd do.
Okay.
Let that dog sleep.
Yep.
And I, they're not going to miss our two hundred to do that, of course. But, I mean, if it was something that you felt passionately about, then absolutely, I'd put them up, pay them, I'd give them a check and. I did go to the meeting about a month and a half ago that they had in Oklahoma City that kind of discussed it and talked about it. I was sitting with some superintendents that, we started talking about this, about, well, wait a minute, before this date, we didn't have that money, does that mean we're going to have it? And so then I called the Ponca City superintendent who's kind of in the lead at this today and said those words, and he was like, you know, there's a possibility that could happen. And he said, I just don't really know what to tell you for sure.
Yeah.
And so.
But they're obviously still trying to grow up support for it, right?
Yeah. And they'll have support. And, and the Ponca City superintendent said at that meeting, if nobody gives them a dime, Ponca City's paying the legal bills because it's that important to them financially.
Well, let them, let them fight for us.
They'll get all the money.
Do we need, how do we take it?
I would say.
Just no action.
No action taken?
Yeah, just say no action.
Judy, no action on number seven.
Got it.
Number eight, proposed executive session to discuss the employment, including salary and contract of elementary principal, high school, middle school principal, and assistant high school. Middle school principal to discuss the employment of a half-day special education paraprofessional and custodian, twenty-five O S, two oh seven, B one.
Motion to convene.
Amber's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jeff, second. Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
White?
Judy, no action on number seven.
Got it.
Number eight, proposed executive session to discuss the employment, including salary and contract of elementary principal, high school, middle school principal, and assistant high school. Middle school principal to discuss the employment of a half-day special education paraprofessional and custodian, twenty-five O S, two oh seven, B one.
Motion to convene.
Amber's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jeff, second. Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
White?
Judy, no action on number seven.
Got it.
Number eight, proposed executive session to discuss the employment, including salary and contract of elementary principal, high school, middle school principal, and assistant high school. Middle school principal to discuss the employment of a half-day special education paraprofessional and custodian, twenty-five O S, two oh seven, B one.
Motion to convene.
Amber's made a motion. Jeff, second. Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
White?
Yes. And so then I called the Ponca City superintendent who's kind of an elite at this today and said those words. And he was like, you know, there's a possibility that could happen. And he said, I just don't really know what to tell you for sure.
Yeah.
And so-
But they're obviously still trying to grow up support for it, right?
Yeah. And they'll have support. And, and the Ponca City superintendent said at that meeting, if nobody gives them a dime, Ponca City's paying the legal bills. Because it's that important to them financially.
Well, let them, let them fight for us.
I, I would say, um-
Just no action.
No action taken.
Yeah, just say no action.
So Judy, no action on number seven. Number eight, proposed executive session to discuss the employment, including salary and contract of elementary principal, high school, middle school principal and assistant high school. Middle school principal to discuss the employment of a half-day special education paraprofessional and custodian, twenty-five O S three oh seven B one.
Motion to convene.
Amber's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jeff second. Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Willi?
Yes.
Time?
Eight thirty-six.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven thirty-six.
And number ten, acknowledgement of the board's return from open session.
Motion to return.
Second.
Amber's made the motion. Jeff second. Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Willi?
Yes.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
During executive session, we discuss the employment, including salary and contract of the elementary principal, high school, middle school principal and assistant high school, middle school principal. Also to discuss the employment of half-day special education paraprofessional and custodian.
Thank you. Number twelve, vote to employ or not to employ Ruth Richmond as elementary principal for the sixteen seventeen school year.
I recommend that Ruth be rehired for the sixteen seventeen school year with current contract.
Jeremy.
You're next, by the way.
I'll second.
Amber made the motion. TJ second. Judy?
Allison?
Yes.
Littlefield?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Willi?
Yes.
Number thirteen, vote to employ or not to employ Jeremy Hickman as high school principal, middle school principal for the sixteen seventeen school year.
Make the recommendation that we hire Jeremy Hickman as high school, middle school principal for the sixteen seventeen school year.
All motion.
Second.
TJ motion. Amber second. Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yeah.
Willi?
Yes.
And, and that was with contract as is too. So, I think I forgot to say that.
Number fourteen, vote to employ or not to employ Chad Hutchison as high school, middle school assistant principal for the sixteen seventeen school year.
I recommend we hire Chad as the high school, middle school assistant for the sixteen seventeen school year.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I made the motion. Jeff second.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yeah.
Willi?
Yes.
Number fifteen, vote to employ or not to employ Joyce Ridgeway as a half-day paraprofessional.
Recommend we, uh, hire Joyce Ridgeway for the paraprofessional position.
Motion to employ.
Second.
Jeff made the motion. Amber second.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Willi?
Yes.
Number sixteen, vote to employ or not to employ Jessica Tidwell as custodian.
And I recommend we employ Jessica as custodian.
All motion.
TJ made the motion. Amber? Amber, did you click up?
Yes.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Willi?
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
Number seventeen, vote to approve or not to approve a contract with Wendy Benz for psychological testing services.
We are gonna use their organization out of Enid. We've been having someone come up from southeast Oklahoma, much closer, much, uh, more, um-
Efficient.
timely, yes. So I do recommend that we do this. Sheila Glover, our special ed director, has met with them, speaks highly, says it's gonna be a good deal.
Do we know amount?
Uh, let's see what our contracts is. It's per service. A hundred dollars an hour includes testing, scoring and interpretation and report writing as well as attendance at the meetings. Mileage will be provided at the current federal rate. It's pretty standard.
Thank you.
All motion.
Second.
TJ's motion. Jeff second. Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yeah.
Willi?
Yes.
Number eighteen, vote to approve or not to approve the addition of Kendra Puffenberger to the signature card on the activity account at ACB Bank.
And I just wanted to let you know that Kendra's gonna start taking over a little more of the responsibilities of the activity account. We kinda had that, you guys had that planned this summer and kinda pulled back a little bit because we knew she was gonna have the baby and be gone a little bit. And so she's back and she's jumping right in, so.
Great.
Motion to approve.
Amber's made the motion.
I'll second.
TJ second. Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
White?
Yeah.
Willi?
Yes.
Are you laughing at me?
No, those are girls.
Nineteen principal reports. This better be good.
I am, I asked Ruth to give a, kind of a short synopsis of what we offer as far as, you know, kids that kinda fall through the cracks. Maybe they're strong in reading, but they're not strong in math. Maybe they're strong in math and not strong in reading. And we have lots of programs that we do that are supposed to pick those up. And we've had some discussions on, how do we not let those kids fall through the cracks? Because they're, they need the help and they're, they're pretty sharp kids. They've just got an area that's maybe not as strong. And so what I thought this would be a good base, let's hear what Ruth has to say. And then you can take that information and kinda think about it and then kinda say, okay, here's what I was thinking as an after-school program or something like that. The one thing I know that is gonna be difficult to do is add anything into the school day.
Right.
Because we are really tight with our time with the kids. But I'm gonna let her do that and kinda, so you kinda know where we are as far as what we offer.
First of all, I'm gonna tell you, we got seven new students after Christmas at elementary, so we're up to two hundred and thirty-two elementary. And we drive by the school, most of our new nice red benches out front. Those are manufactured and they did a great job. And teachers love their new ice machine and their bonuses, so they all appreciate that. And the teachers are just working hard. We've started our new math curriculum, they started their new reading curriculum, their science that they got last summer. We're all into all that. They're still learning some of it, but the new math that we got, came with all kinds of, the new, there's two big tubs per classroom, so they're doing a lot of hands-on with all their lessons. So they can do reinforcement, you know, a lot of times if you get your hands on something and make, or put it into real-life situations, they understand it better. All the grades do accelerated math, which the teacher sets objectives on the computer to print them out a little assignment. They can either set it to what they're learning in class or what the individual student is low in. So if this one can't do addition, but this one's working on subtraction, you know, they work on whatever they need to help on. If they get it and they understand it, then it automatically just progresses them. If they're not getting it, it keeps giving them more addition and the teacher steps in and remediates with them. And it works. Accelerated math works if you do it right. Like you said when I was teaching math.
This is the first year we've had that program or is it the second?
No. We've had it.
Okay.
Well, two thousand one hundred and twelve, so we kind of started that. We're just pushing it harder, making everybody use it and use it.
Good.
So it really works. So, you know, everybody's working on their own level though, so you might have first grader working on third grade level. Possibly, if they're really, but not the upper. Every class goes to computer two times a week. In the first few minutes, Ms. Meads has them do math facts in a flash, a little program on the computer. Again, it's individualized, where they're working on whatever math facts they need. If they, once they master all their addition facts and moves them into subtraction, and then it goes to multiplication and division. And at our little Friday finale we do on Friday afternoons, we recognize when somebody masters a level. It's a little boost for their self-esteem. And then she also does keyboarding in there, but they get a little bit of math there. Then she also lets them do some math, some games, but yet they're still learning math. And they all use Math Facts in a Flash, which is another Renaissance program. They use it in their classroom, you know, about ten minutes a day. Like second grade uses it between recess and lunch, they have a ten-minute block before they can go to lunch room. So it's perfect time, get the little neos out, little keyboards, and they just do it. And then grades one through five, we're doing Alpha Plus. And teachers have the standards that they have to teach. So they teach that lesson, then they test them, give them a five-question assessment. If the kids don't master that or pass that assessment, then the teacher goes back and remediates those two students. Or if the whole class didn't do very well on it, then she'll just reteach the whole lesson. So nobody's getting left behind that way. And the teachers are accountable to make sure every kid is getting it. And, reading, we changed where everybody has a ninety-minute uninterrupted reading block. We also have forty-five minute intervention time where the teachers work with small groups. The kids have done some silent reading for, sorry, readers. They're doing this guided reading where they read a little short story. You know, push some comprehension and vocabulary. And then they also have accelerated reading, if they do still on their own, whether they read a book, take a test to test their comprehension of it.
Do you have tutoring for the parents? Cause I don't understand some of this stuff.
The accelerated reading-
Like, they need to ask your teacher that question so I can learn what I'm doing.
The accelerated reading party was really cute this, at the end of the semester. She brought in, uh, Margaret Smith who came in and did the, uh, gypsy-
Called it gypsy artist.
Gypsy artist. And they all had a real canvas and real paints. And they were all, you know, did a painting. And it was really a great activity and a, and a fun activity, so it was really impressive.
So they set some meet their goal, both accuracy and point wise, and they get rewarded at the end of nine weeks. And we had ninety this time. Ninety-two, I'm not sure what it was, the most we've ever had.
It was really, really packed and I was excited to see it.
It was fun, yeah. And we got popcorn for when you have those, we donate the drinks.
And one of the things that Ruth has started too on Fridays, and you might tell them a little bit about it, is kind of a recognition thing that I think is awesome.
Yeah, Friday finale we do at two forty-five on Fridays. PTA sponsoring student of the week, they get a K and Varnwell certificate. And then we recognize the ones that met their AR goals, or the ones that meet their math goals, whoever's birthdays. And then the different grade levels are taking turns being in charge of it, so the second grade teachers were in charge of it. They get up and lead it, but they have four, five of their students. One of them leads Pleasant Allegiance, one of them tells the character word of the week, like respect or responsibility. And they read a definition and maybe give an example and this is good. It's good for the kids to get us there and it's good to be recognized, it's good for them to be liked.
It's a neat deal.
Not just sports, it's gonna-
Right.
Yeah. It's really neat deal.
To pop in, two forty, two forty-five on Fridays.
I'll be going.
It's a little chaotic, but two hundred and thirty-two squished in the cafeteria, but.
And, and I will tell you too, Ruth and I have been working, there's still some things to do in the, in the elementary. The remodel's done, but we need, we've talked about some benching on the inside and places to put their band instruments and on the walls, what we wanna do on the wall. So, you know, we're, we're, we're working toward making sure that the inside is, is education-friendly and, and as we can. So, we, the benches we put up there are really nice for the kids to be able to sit there when they're waiting on their buses. And, but we've, we've got other things in the works, so it just takes us time.
Built some shelves.
Built some shelves.
Where they lost their-
Where they lost their, um, storage.
I was gonna ask you, how do you like the, the bell system with the, through the phones? Is that working out okay?
It's starting to, I mean, it's starting to work.
Yeah.
It can work forever, but it's, they're ringing on time and, yeah.
Wow.
I didn't know how, you know, just hadn't heard.
So, um, just, you know, you guys shoot me an email, talk to, you know, if you have, kinda absorb all that and then see if there's, um, if it real, if, if that's really, if there was anything else you, you wanted to say, hey, can we do this so that I'll have a, a good base to work from and, and know-
Teachers are using every minute of their day.
Yeah.
That's what I said, can't they go longer? Can't we have our kids there till five, five-thirty?
Kinda take their shit.
Not yours. I don't want it, I just-
But, uh, anything else on the elementary end?
No, I think we're, come by anytime you want.
Okay.
Could you do that, your recognition deal in the gymnasium? I mean, would, if you had some better tools in there to-
We could, but we put it under the cafeteria cause we got TVs in there so that we can put the-
So if you had a TV in the gym, would that be better?
Possibly.
Have more space. More space. So, Pro presenters is coming at the end of the month to do some training for us. We can talk to them about it.
And if we're done there, we start dismissing the candy or whatever.
Right, right, right.
It's still-
Nice to see that you have a parking lot now, that's, makes things a lot smoother.
Yeah, and once that road opens up too-
Once that road opens up, we're gonna put the buses and the daycare back there, dismiss them, and then they'll leave.
Mr. Hickman?
We're not doing anything over here, but we're having fun.
At the high school or at the public?
Yes.
You know, just to touch on some things you said, very appreciative of the Christmas bonus as well as all the things you guys have done to help the school, the teachers and everything that's, that's been given. I gave you all a copy of the calendar, basically just to touch on the main points, not to go through it all. Obviously basketball's in full swing, elementary, junior high, high school. Sometimes we're having three to four games a week to try to get caught up because of the football season going long. Trophy auction is this Thursday, if anybody wants to go, at six-thirty at the fairgrounds. Uh, the band will be on the radio if you happen to be up at seven twenty or seven thirtyish, somewhere around there on Wednesday, this Wednesday on KOFM, if you would like to listen to that. The speech and debate season's picking up, academic team is participating. There's some FFA events going on. Basically, I would say January is, maybe April is as busy as we can be. Just a lot of activities. We are obviously incorporating Renaissance and Alpha over here with our reading and math. Teachers that used it last year have kinda figured it out, made it what they're doing, and they feel pretty comfortable with it. And being able again to split our classes at the, at the junior high level has really helped and it's beneficial to the teachers. There's a lot of schools that can't do that, so. They have, I feel like they have a real advantage having fifteen in a class instead of thirty all at once, so. But, you know, the teachers are working hard and I expect great things, so I think everything's going well here as far as I know.
I wanna compliment, um, Mr. Hickman and his staff on a wonderful tournament last weekend. He, he averted disaster many times and they worked hard. We had a fantastic hospitality room, the, you know, people, people working the gates and the concession and, and just really gave their time to make it a wonderful tournament. And it really was a nice tournament. And so, yeah, they did a good job.
Thank you all. Okay, number twenty, superintendent report.
Well, my report is pretty much just financial. You know, the state just came in and, uh, it, what it turned out to be was twenty-three dollars a, a kit is what you got cut. And then you got a three percent cut on your, um, FBA, what are the, what are those?
Flexible benefit allowance.
Flexible benefit allowance, which is like your health insurance and for, and for the, um, and all of that for our employees. And so what ours came out to be, and I did a little sheet for you, just, I didn't wanna have to- Run off all the State Department stuff, I just wrote it in myself. You can see there on the first, uh, first sheet, and I've got, I've got one, I've got one more if anybody wants to see it. And I'm sorry, I didn't run off a lot of those, cause it really was just gonna be a kind of a, just a brief description. But, um, what we started out with on foundation aid was about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And what our midterm ended up being was about two hundred and nine. And I, I can, I showed you there what our losses were. We lost eighty-seven thousand dollars because we had too much carryover last year. And I, I just found out today that I can contest that. So what I'm gonna do is call the State Department. And they may just laugh at me because they think we've got all this money because the pro production has just, just stopped. But I'm gonna see what I can do to maybe contest it and see if we can just get it to-
When was the cutoff for all that? I mean, what, what is it?
July, uh, June thirtieth. And so I'm working really, really been working with Buddy and saying, okay, cause I'm trying to figure out what I feel like our carryover's gonna be for next year and will we have to take a penalty? What we ended up getting cut from ADM was about seven thousand dollars. The State Department did do a nice job of, there's two parts of the formula. There's the top part, which we don't get any money on. Uh, we get charged so many things for ad valorem, gross production, we end up with zero. But the bottom part is about students and salary, and we get the two hundred and eighty-eight from that bottom part. Well, instead of just doing a blatant across-the-board cut on twenty-three percent of all of it, they took eleven, oh, what is it, eleven point four percent from the top, so we didn't get a cut from that. And we got eleven, eleven, uh, point zero percent on the bottom part. So it ended up being less than what I originally shot to you last week because of the way that they did it, cause I felt like it was gonna be more in the, in, just right around the thirty thousand dollar range. And so that was good, it did save us a little money. And we ended up getting a cut of about seventeen thousand dollars from the three percent and from the, um, from both places. So our cut ended up being about a hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, and the reason it doesn't match up from two eighty-eight to two oh nine is because we had growth, and we had a midterm adjustment. We got a little more money because of that, and so it, we didn't take as big a cut as we would've if we hadn't had student growth and things like that. But that's kinda where we are with, with what, how that affected us, and, you know, we got the short end of the stick because of the eighty-seven thousand dollars, but I will look into that. Um, uh, you know, we're, we're all, superintendents are scurrying and looking to what's gonna happen. I believe there'll be another cut this year, and I believe that next year's budget's not going to be pleasant. So, what I, what I will do for us is, and I've been doing it this last week, is really looking hard at where we are and what I think our carryover's gonna be. And then start projecting, okay, are we going to be spending more money than we're bringing in? How many months is that gonna happen? And how are we gonna make sure that three years from now, we're not where you were in two thousand and eleven? Judy showed me those numbers. Two thousand and eleven, the general fund had, in, in September, had negative fifty-five thousand dollars in it. So that's what we're going to make sure we don't do, and we're gonna, and, and school finance isn't a thirty-minute thing. You, with the decisions you make right now are what's gonna, you're gonna have to live with three years from now, four years from now. So we're gonna make some good decisions, and we're gonna try to, um, do some things that'll, that'll protect us, and, uh, make sure that our, uh, we're able to, um, provide the education that, that we're at the standards that we are now. So anyway, that's what, what life has been about for me, that and, and some building projects, but... But, um, I will tell you that the SOD issue has been resolved, and, uh, we are not gonna go with the hundred and fifty thousand dollar SOD bid from Crossland. And we aren't taking a thirty thousand dollar hit because we changed our mind. And, um, they were very, much more agreeable when, when I told them that they were gonna have to show me, uh, documentation where they'd even been hired by the board. And so they changed their tune a lot, said they'd give us the, the full amount back instead of charging us some. So anyway, that was, that was over Christmas. But, uh, other than that, um, it's been busy, busy with tournaments and going and, uh, money and building, and, uh, it's been good busy. It's been good. But we're rocking along, gonna be graduation before you know it. Yeah. So, do you guys want one of these papers over there? But that's, do you have any questions about any of the financial part of it? Okay, if we could get some oil wells kicking back up, that'd be great.
Or just an increase.
Price per barrels, if that'd be, if, that'd be good.
Wait till the bomb goes off a little. It'll go crazy. We'll see a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes! Yes! Ready. But that's it for me.
Okay. Twenty-one, new business?
There is no new business.
Twenty-two, discussion and vote to adjourn?
Motion.
Amber's made a motion.
Two.
Jeff, second? Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Ross?